I tapped the wrong thing, sorry. I'd like to call the Lowell School Committee meeting to order. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow. Six present, one absent.
Now, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of June 15, 2022, and the special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting of June 27, and to place them on file. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All those in favor? Any comments or questions? Motion passes. And now, we go to permission to enter. I'm looking for a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Chun. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow. Five present, two absent, approved.
Now, we're at the memorial section of the agenda. Our first memorial will be for Kathleen Rochelot, mother of Carolyn Rochelot, coordinator of special programs, and Stephen Stevenson, retired Lowell High School teacher. Talk in chambers, please. If my colleagues don't mind, I will read the first motion. It's from me, but I don't think it's controversial. "Request the superintendent to provide the committee with monthly or more frequently as needed updates on the status of the Lowell High School construction project." Do I have a second on that motion? Ms. Martin? All those in favor? Oh, Ms. Martin would like to say-
If I could just say one thing, I do know, you know, for any members of the public who are watching, there is going to be a meeting of the Lowell High School School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night. People can attend in person at the Irish Auditorium, or it will be broadcast to get additional information. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Okay, I think the motion passed, right? We can, okay. Next motion by Ms. Martin. "Request that the administration prepare a report on the staff turnover rate at each one of our schools." Seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. What I'm really looking to do is, I think we've, and we've seen this over the course of time, too, that one of the kind of red flags that can come up in a school community is when you see a large number of teachers and other staff leaving. That can sometimes be an indicator that there is something that needs to be addressed by the administration, or even perhaps in some cases by the committee. You know, I've had, you know, there are, we all, I know, get a lot of information from parents that can kind of sometimes seem like a one-off about one school or the other, or, you know, it's hard to kind of look at it in an effective way, I'd say. So what I'm hoping we can do with this motion is get a report that will give us a metric that we can use, that can give us an early indicator of problems that may be happening in a, in a school community. I would like to see, again, for each one of our schools, a discreet number so that we can be able to compare as much as we can apples to apples. But I think looking at, being able to look at that across the district will give us an opportunity to really get, I think, what can be a very effective kind of, again, metric for us to be able to gauge where we may have, sometimes maybe even just problems in the beginning stages that we may be able to intercede in in an earlier way. So that's the premise behind my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to subcommittees. So we have the Equity and Access Subcommittee report. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Now we can move on to subcommittees. I apologize. I don't do that, do this that often. Equity and Access Subcommittee, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, June 13. Chairperson, Stacy Thompson.
Thank you. And you're doing a good job. So just a couple of, it was a, we met on Monday, the 13th, at 5:30. Myself and Ms. Doherty were present, as well as Ms. Martin as well. Ms. Phillips and Ms. Duda gave a really thoughtful presentation on the enrollment process and the enrollment process review, that they brought in a consulting organization, public consulting group, to really address that, the, and the process efficiencies and the needs that they had. And they found some really good primary findings. I think a lot of what it came down to was, you know, different touchpoints, areas where there were inconsistencies, and I think one of the things that really stood out was a need for clarity between the different departments about, you know, things that were being done. In addition to that, I think that one of the things that, for me, was really great is that they spoke about specific themes that needed to be addressed. Staffing, training and professional development, physical space and resources, family communication channels, cross-department coordination, the Aspen system, which is a beast in itself, and then culture and communication. I think that one of the things that was really important was the discussion about Aspen, because Aspen has lots of facets, but it's not really been fully, I guess, all, all of what it can do has not been fully realized. That was something that was really kind of broken down in this process. And, and the need to do things to make sure that it's really stronger for our English language learners, and for parents in general that just may not be familiar with the system. So I would like to accept this as a report of progress.
Any other comments from the committee? We need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All in favor? Approved. Now, we are on to the reports of the superintendent.
Oh, I-
The COVID-19, oh, I'm sorry.
The family and community engagement.
Did I skip?
Was that on the agenda or no?
Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, report of the meeting of Monday, June 11.
July, July 11.
July 11. It says June.
I know.
Chairperson, Eileen Del Rossi.
We had the meeting on Monday, July 11, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Ms. Martin and Ms. Thompson were in attendance, as well as Ms. Phillips, Chief Engagement and Equity Officer, as well as Ms. Patino, Spanish bilingual family liaison. Our agenda was to review the Family Leadership Institute, as well as review of job description for the Family Institute Director. Ms. Phillips had stated that the Family Leadership Institute is included in the strategic plan and has been budgeted for. She stated that this will help improve our system. Ms. Phillips spoke about Lowell Public Schools' demographics and stated our district has a very large ELL population, and stated we need to think, we need to think about multiple languages to support our families. She then addressed the core beliefs of the family and leadership engagement, which are really to outreach in all cultures and languages so that everyone is aware of the programs and have the same equality in the programming in all languages, in all cultures, in all neighborhoods. Ms. Phillips had a presentation including workshops and trainings for individual families, referrals and expanded workforce, economic advancement, opportunities provided through strategic community partnerships, formal family leadership pipeline in partnership with post-secondary institutions. We had speakers who also talked to the advantage of being able to really reach their population, their culture, and, but, like, multilingual population, and really get to the core of all the programs that Lowell has to offer for their students, and how valuable this program truly can be. Ms. Phillips stated that the Family Institute needs the following: a director of family engagement, funding to develop implement of workshops, trainings, funding for developing college leadership cohort for parents, funding for parent-led workshops so that parents can help out, ongoing planning and engagement with community partners and facilities. I asked, what was the percentage of parents that are in the language circle? Ms. Phillips had stated that this was a pilot program before COVID hit. There were 10 schools pre-pandemic. She stated that there were small circles, seven to 10 per language. She stated a survey was completed for each family that attended. Ms. Martin had a great idea that this program could really be leveraged in our adult education program, so that really all of Lowell Public Schools are integrated into really giving back to the community, and that this specific position that is suggested in this position really be vetted by the union so that there can be maybe a salary position for this. Instead of it, instead of it being a 260-day position, it can be a salary position, so that there are more benefits to it. Towards the end, we made it, we made a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. Seconded, my motion was seconded by Ms. Thompson. Ms. Martin made a motion to adjourn at 6:47, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that report. I'm wondering, does anyone else have any comments or questions? So then, I need a, a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor? Approved. Before we go on to reports of the superintendent, I just wanted to take a point of personal privilege to ask a question. It came to my attention that there were a few employees, I believe in the clerical staff, who did not receive their vacation pay as expected, and I just wanted to ask if that has been resolved. Superintendent Boyd, could you update us on that?
Ms. Turner?
Yes, it has been resolved. There were three people that were listed as schedulers instead of clerks. So the payroll office, they erred on the side of caution and did not pay them, but that was resolved. They're getting paid this week. Okay, so that's been- Handled. Tomorrow, the checks will be out, or by Friday? Yeah, tomorrow. Tomorrow. All right. Thank you very much for that. So the first report is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm hopeful that this may be the last COVID update that we need to present to the committee. I'm also excited about our move towards normalcy. The committee might remember this actually would be the first normal calendar summer that I've experienced as superintendent in Lowell Public Schools, given the timing of COVID-19 and that, along with my appointment as superintendent. So Dr. Hall's going to share with you, you have within your packet more data, but he's going to specifically talk to you about a letter that we received from the Department of Health, and hopefully receive some guidance from the committee. Our recommendation is to continue to abide by the recommendations from the Department of Health. This recommendation is a change of protocol from last year, hence we're bringing it to the committee for further guidance. But our recommendation is to continue to follow what has served us well throughout the course of this pandemic, which is following the recommendations of our local health officials. Dr. Hall?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. So in the last three pages of the packet, before it gets up on the screen, is a-
There you go.
There's a letter from the city health department, and the third to last page is basically, our recommendation is to discontinue COVID testing in the schools. And here's the letter right here.
There you go.
And just previous to that, the ultimate recommendation is to discontinue COVID testing in the schools. The state's also ceasing support on this, so the gist of that is it would cost $780,000 for us to produce the same number of test kits, and that doesn't include administration in regards to administering the actual tests in the school and the support and getting them to the lab. So you can anticipate that the ultimate cost would be over $1 million to continue the program, like it was last year. However, the city health department is recommending that that's not warranted and that we should discontinue the testing. We will have a reserve of some tests. We are picking some up in Franklin next week, so there'll be some available in September, should anyone want to ask for them. So there will be a slight reserve to continue in September for people that want to take a test kit with them. But ultimately, the recommendation is to discontinue. Are there any questions?
Ms. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I just ask, Dr. Hall, if, through you, Madam Chair, so if a student is, has a symptom, do we still have a kit that would verify if that kit is negative or positive in school?
We definitely would in September have them available. The, the tests that we're picking up are supposed to expire at the end of September, so we'd have to look at that again to whether or not we want to have a resource on hand for immediate testing.
So by way of follow-on, if I could, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The best analogy that's been provided to me by our health officials is we're moving into a phase of the pandemic where we're managing it much like we manage other illnesses, whereby our nurses would recommend and certainly have a youngster sent home, and the youngster would be assessed and tested, much like we do for other illnesses where those specific tests are not in school, but the, the family does have access through their other, other venues, much like other illnesses. So this illness, by virtue of it being a pandemic, has been managed very, very differently than any other illness that finds its way into the, into our public school environments. As such, the committee's been provided with significant funding and significant resources to help the community through COVID, through this stage of COVID-19. Some of those, some of those resources, a good many of those resources are now being phased out, and the recommendation from health officials is that we start moving into a direction where our schools play a similar role to what we play with other health situations in the community. So there's other community resources there, Mr. Lay and other committee members, but it's the role of our public schools is being shifted over time, and this is the next shift for our public schools.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
I just have a couple of quick questions through, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Hall or Dr. Boyd. Are the parents being contacted about this and the students prior to coming back, so that the ones that have obviously been in school prior and know kind of the process are aware that it's not going to be happening for them? And then the other question is, are there a list of places that they can go to be tested, being sent in multiple languages, or posted somewhere, somewhere it's accessible for people to see so that they can mentally, emotionally, because it's not just a physical illness, COVID, it's a mental emotional illness that it impacted the community. So I'm just curious of what, what processes we're putting in place for that.
Ms. Thompson, that definitely will be done. There's messaging in summer school now, but we haven't sent a message out to all the parents yet. We wanted to come before the committee first, but that certainly will be done, both of the ideas that you presented.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Boyd, did you want to add to that?
Yeah. So during the course of the pandemic, particularly at its height, we did, at one point, we were doing multi-day forums. Last year, we moved to forums, virtual forums, I believe, weekly, heading up to school. We'll do likely one to give the entire community a virtual update in addition to the written updates. Because it is a transition, I'm hopeful that this is, starts to be the culmination of, of a return to greater normalcy. But again, I heavily emphasize hope, because I think I gave that message before. But there will be at least one virtual forum, so for community members that are listening, we'll send out that link. This is the last guidance that we need, actually, from the committee to start getting those scheduled, but we schedule those largely in August.
Ms. Chun and then Ms. Del Rossi.
I have two questions. One, in regards to, I know that we have the vaccines readily available for our students now. Do we have informations, locations where we can give to our families if they're willing to take that step to have their children vaccinated? Do we have that for our families? Can we send that out to them if, you know, if they want their kids vaccinated? And the next question is, we know that last, the last two years, we've provided tablets for our students to do online learning, and are we asking our fam, I, I'm not clear about it, but are we asking our families to send back the tablets or the devices, or are they keeping it? And please let us know about that. Thank you.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The answer to the first is yes. Any information that we're provided about vaccine availability, we disseminate out to our families, especially if it's requested of us to disseminate it. One difference might be is that we were actually opening up schools, and some of our schools were actually being used as sites. That's largely evolved out, so that our schools are not being used as sites. However, we still provide our families with access to the information of where, where to locate and where to access the vaccines. The vaccines for community members are readily available, all age groups readily available throughout, through the Lowell Health Department. There's a, the second question, all of our students have, we do our one-to-one district. Students who are enrolled in summer program keep their, keep their devices, take the devices home during, during the summer. During the school year, all of our students have their devices and bring their devices back and forth. It's largely like a textbook in Lowell Public Schools, their, their one-to-one device. So we were one of the first school districts that transitioned to one-to-one. Right now, we have approximately a third of our student population enrolled in summer program, so they'll have their devices throughout, for 12 months, from summer program right back to school opening, and all of our students will continue to have those. That's a-
One, in regards to, I know that we have the vaccines readily available for our students now. Do we have informations, locations where we can give to our families if they're willing to take that step to have their children vaccinated? Do we have that for our families? Can we send that out to them if, you know, if they want their kids vaccinated? And the next question is, we know that last, the last two years, we've provided tablets for our students to do online learning. And are we asking our fans? I am not clear about it, but are we asking our families to send back the tablets or the devices? Or are they keeping it? And please let us know about that. Thank you.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The answer to the first is yes. Any information that we're provided about vaccine availability, we disseminate out to our families, especially if it's requested of us to disseminate it. One difference might be is that we were actually opening up schools, and some of our schools were actually being used as sites. That's largely evolved out so that our schools are not being used as sites. However, we still provide our families with access to the information of where, where to locate and where to access the vaccines. The vaccines for community members are readily available, all age groups readily available throughout, through the Lowell Health Department. There's a, the second question, all of our students have, we do our one-to-one district. Students who are enrolled in summer program keep their, keep their devices, take the devices home during, during the summer. During the school year, all of our students have their devices and bring their devices back and forth. It's largely like a textbook in Lowell Public Schools. Their, their one-to-one device. So, we were one of the first school districts that transitioned to one-to-one. Right now, we have approximately a third of our student population enrolled in summer program. So, they'll have their devices throughout for 12 months from summer program right back to school opening. And all of our students will continue to have those. That's a part of our digital learning plan that goes over and beyond COVID-19 protocol.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I'm just wondering if we're sending out these COVID tests, can we get one for strep, air infections, and conjunctivitis?
Dr. Boyd?
Was that a rhetorical question?
I'm just wondering because it would save a lot of time in doctor visits.
I'm not aware of the availability of those tests, but I can certainly look into those. Ms. Del Rossi?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding this report? A motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Chune. All those in favor? Oh, okay, I'll accept them all at the end. Sorry. Next report is an update on capital improvements. We have a registered speaker. Do we want the speaker to go first? Or do you want to present the report first?
Mr. Georges, are you okay if I present the, you're the only speaker here? Mr. Georges is a regular visitor. I would say it's, that we, we expect to bring to you on a periodic basis, likely a quarterly basis, an update on all of the capital improvements throughout the district. There is a motion on one specific project to have more frequent updates on. If we can pull up the table for our technology support, if we can pull up the presentation, just the project table. So, committee members, Dr. Hall's prepared to walk you through each of these projects. You should expect to receive a table such as this on a quarterly basis. Just an update on where our projects stand. There was a subcommittee meeting last night where I know a lot was talked through in depth. That wasn't the intent of this. Instead, it's just to provide you with an update on, here's all of the capital projects you're currently investing in as a committee, and here's the status of those projects with our anticipated project completion date. Now, I want to share with the committee that while my last message was about returning to normalcy within our schools in terms of COVID protocol, the aftereffects of the pandemic are still very much affecting every aspect of our core operations. And here, the supply chains are having a significant impact. So, you're seeing a project completion date for some of these that were adjusted based on supply chain. We could very well see these updated again as we hear from our vendors and our suppliers and our providers. But these are the current projects that the committee has committed to with the current status as well as the, the current project completion date. And we'll provide this to the committee under similar header going forward. You should expect to see a more condensed version in your packet. This table is likely what you'll see being updated, and we'll add to it as the committee invests in further projects. With that, Madam Committee Member, if you'd like to hear from the speaker or take questions.
Mr. Georges?
Okay. Yeah, Paul Georges, President, UTL. Nice to see you all again. It's been an old routine, but I did want to comment on a report produced by Dr. Hall, which I think clearly articulates our concerns about utilizing, relying on the school department budget to balance the city side of government. I understand, I always hear these kumbaya kind of statements about we all have to work together. But I'll just bring you back to what happened just several months ago when the superintendent was asked to spend $5 million on Colley Stadium repair. And he said there were better needs to be with the students in our, in our system. And at that point, the city manager cut $6 million over the next two years out of, in their cash contribution. I heard Connor Baldwin last night talk about how the school department, he was so proud about the fact that the city had exceeded its net school spending requirements. But the, the secret behind all of that is who, who does the accounting? The only thing that happens is the city hands in a report to DESI, and unless there's a major objection by somebody, they just pass it through. There's no accountability about what they're claiming they're spending and what they're really spending. There has to be accountability. I'm looking at $14 million that we're spending this year. And when the city manager came out with a recommended budget several months ago, there was $4 million committed to 50 buildings in Lowell, 30 of them are school-related. That's where $2.4 million comes because it's $80,000 per building. Is that a serious commitment by the city to improve the infrastructure of buildings? Why are we paying for modulars at Colley Stadium so football coaches can have, what, team meetings? And we're paying for classrooms, modular classrooms over at the STEM Academy? Because for some damn reason, we didn't object enough and allowed four classrooms to be conducted at the end of hallways. Talk about safety for schools. I mean, you've got, you're talking about issues about windows and the fact that doors don't lock or teachers don't have the keys to be able to lock them and open them. This is a situation where they had, didn't have a fourth wall. That's that absurd. Nobody should be living under those conditions. And I'm talking about the kids that are learning and the teachers that are teaching. I'm looking at 14, almost $15 million committed by this school committee thus far for things that are the responsibility of the city. That's not right. I think in terms of what could that buy to improve our system right now? It'd be 225 teachers. It could be about 450 to 500 paraprofessionals. It could be 125 or 130 specialized-trained people, school psychologists, others to try to take care of the social, emotional needs of our kids. There's all kinds of things that we could do that would improve the system. Now, over the next, my, my big issue as we go forward is in the next six or seven years, the Student Opportunity Act is going to, is kicking in. And there's going to be huge chunks of additional funding coming to the city of Lowell. It's going to be coming to the school department. Honestly, the city of Lowell will try to get its hands on it any way it can. And I'm asking you, as the school committee, just do not make any more appropriations that should be the responsibility of the city. You've already bailed out the STEM, the two and what, $5 million, $5 and a half million, a little over $2 million for Colley Stadium. Colley Stadium's a football stadium. Let's be realistic about this. The city is going to continue to try to get its hands on the money, and we have to act together and say no. It's got to be a simple no, or it will continue. And the kind of improvement you could see over the next six or seven years through the Student Opportunity Act, and that money, which the legislature recognized they had deprived us of over a period of time, and now we're going to put back in our budgets, is going to be the bait they're going to go after every single time. You know, we, can you imagine if we had $14 million right now? What kind of services we could give the kids in this system? If we had been in a city that had maintained its buildings and wasn't looking at all of a sudden $100 million in improvements according to the Collins Report just to catch up with what they've been missing? I'm just asking you, don't vote for any additional appropriations geared toward the city that are the city's responsibility. Clearly, facilities are facilities. Modular classrooms are facilities. They can't be considered anything else. With that, I'll just say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Georges. Ms. Chune?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Georges. And I, I totally agree about the modulars being provided for Colley Stadium. The fact that hearing from the motion Ms. Del Rossi put in a couple of months ago about having the STEM Academy where our students are learning in the classroom, that's the one thing that, that's why we hear. We want to make sure that our services and our funds go towards the education of our students and our teachers. And knowing that, hearing our students still considering the fact that all these shootings that's happening in our schools, are we really keeping our kids safe? And if they're learning in the classroom, are they really have anything there to actually block them from the intruder? So, those are one of the things that I really emphasize. And if we're providing extra funds to go towards a modulars for a facility that is, you know, owned by the city, you know, I would rather use that to service our students. And I totally agree with that, Mr. Georges. I thank you for speaking up about that. And as someone who feel very wholeheartedly about supporting our teachers and our student learning, I do not want to see that being utilized in a way that it's not going to help support our students, especially knowing that their safety is, you know, in jeopardy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are we? Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, did, sorry. Did we want to forward this to the Joint Facilities Committee, both from the, the school committee and the council? I know we've scheduled a meeting of that in the next four to six weeks. So, I guess I'd make a motion to move, to share this report with that subcommittee to be discussed at a later date.
Okay, motion by Ms. Martin to forward this report to be discussed with the Joint City Council and School Committee, Facilities Subcommittee. I think that's an excellent idea. And Ms. Del Rossi has seconded that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you. Next report is the report on motions. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. The responses to motions are within the packet. We submit them as a, as a report of progress. If there are any questions, staff is available.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I just had one. I know that, I believe it was at our last meeting, we had passed a motion to eliminate from this report any outstanding motions from prior committees. I think it was a great job, got rid of a lot. There's one left. So, if there was one that we could just clean up, we'd be all set. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this report? If I could, I'd speak from here. On page nine, the vacancy savings request. I know that was in June. I'm just wondering, do we have an expected time that we'd be getting that report? Dr. Boyd?
Ms. Turner?
I, I estimate we can have it for the next meeting.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and hearing, oh, Ms. Thompson?
Sorry. I was a little slow to the game. On page nine as well, it's a list of the contractors and partnerships that are reaching towards making diversity, equity, and inclusion something the entire district is doing in all areas. So, in supply chain, so on and so forth. It says in progress, but I didn't know what that, what that would mean as far as how far out. I know it's kind of, it's a lofty and kind of a hefty lift, so I just didn't know an idea.
Dr. Boyd?
Ms. Turner?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Could you repeat that?
Absolutely. So, it's the one, it's on page nine. It's a list of the contractors, partnerships, and organizations as far as how much we are making sure that there's DEI included in that, in the usage of supply chain things and so on and so forth. And I know that it's a heavy lift to try to get like how much we've already been doing, how many, for example, women-owned businesses, small businesses, people of color that we're working with across the board in the district. So, it's not just about the schools. It's about the district, making sure they're doing DEI work.
So, I think this is a very, this is important to look at. And we do have a list of all of, all of our current contracts. So, all we would have to do is identify which ones are minority or women-owned. One thing I did want to point out when you had discussed this before, we, we're subject to something called Chapter 30B. So, we have to, unless it's something on a state contract, like if there are multiple vendors on a state contract, and we're allowed then to pick a diverse vendor. But otherwise, we have to do things, it's called spread the wealth.
Correct.
They don't allow us to do, use that as a criteria.
Absolutely.
But I can definitely, I can take what we currently have updated to show you which ones are women and minority-owned. That would be something I could have by the next meeting as well.
Thank you. And then the last one is on the last page. It's for the mayor. Unfortunately, he's not here. But I was curious. This was something that I had, I really wanted for the summer, but obviously that did not happen. But it was about having signage for our neurodiverse young people. And I know that on the city side, Councilor Drinkwater had also stated that that's something that he wanted to get done. So, I didn't know where the status of moving toward getting that done together jointly. Thank you.
I can share that information with the mayor. Thank you. Dr. Boyd?
Yeah, thank you. I think also, by way of update, Ms. Martin, were you referring to, the one item you were referring to, I believe, was a motion by Ms. Clark that was, it was refiled by Ms. Del Rossi upon, after inauguration, that particular motion. So, I can clear that up by making sure that we adjust the, the name and, and move it to Ms. Del Rossi, who resurfaced that, that particular motion, unless you want to withdraw the motion. But I can speak to you after the meeting. Ms. Del Rossi?
No, I believe this motion was in regards to the parks being more neurodiverse for, no?
No, this is, we, I think that would be fine. You can discuss with Ms. Del Rossi after.
Yeah, let's discuss after.
It's on page 14. But we can do it offline. Okay. All right, any more comments or questions about the status of outstanding motions? Hearing none, we can move on to the response to motion 11 Point COO by Eileen Del Rossi regarding transportation protocols.
Thank you for the response. I greatly appreciate it. And I, I get that there is an issue with calling in and the times that people call in. But I guess one of my major questions is, is there a consequence for employees? And I know it's hard to even get employees right now. I understand that. But is there a consequence for employees if they call in past a certain hour?
Dr. Hall?
Ms. Del Rossi, I'd have to get that from the vendors. So, those drivers are with the companies. I don't, I don't think they'd be probably willing to divulge the personnel consequences, but I'm confident that they manage the drivers and discourage calling in late. We did have a lot of issues due to the pandemic, which created some absences. But as I wrote, our Director of Transportation did a lot of rerouting, or as best he could, to minimize this disruption to education as best as we could.
I just want to make sure. I know there are separate buses for students with disabilities and so forth, but the Lowell Public School buses, the yellow buses, the long ones that show up for students, is that still private?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm done.
The next, next response is to motion 05 by Eileen Del Rossi regarding audit special education.
Thank you, Mr. Vicente, for the very thorough examination of caseloads and the amount of time that students could be pulled out and so forth. I think my major question, and I know this is something that districts across the state and probably the whole entire country deal with, but it was more honed into how much time are really special education teachers spending on the weekends and time off to catch up writing IEPs and so forth, progress reports, all of the duties that aren't just listed on here according to their, their grids?
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. We actually have Dr. Vicente here, our Director of Special Education. Madam Committee Member, are you okay if he responds to you from the speaker's table? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So, thank you for clarification on the information that you were specifically looking for. So, to begin with, in response to the motion, I prepared information that gives a little bit of background about how my office goes through the process of making determinations about appropriate allocations of our resources, of our staffing, to make sure that we're doing the best we can to meet the needs of our students. Being a special education teacher comes with many challenges. We do our best to work within the confines of what the law tells us, being mindful of our contracts, being mindful of our relationships with the UTL. We've got great relationships in the city to try to be incredibly mindful about the best way to go about in servicing our students. I will say that there's no doubt that the demands of the job definitely have certain requirements. And there are, you know, definitely times, as a longtime special educator myself, where outside of school, I would be working to get caught up on a number of things. Very similar in my mind to teachers planning and preparing for good, strong instruction. What we try to do is be as equitable as we can. We try to target the numbers that are most appropriate to provide instruction, giving consideration to all the different variances that impact those decisions. Above all else... that impact those decisions. Above all else, what I really try to do myself personally is have an open door policy, make sure that I get into buildings as often as I can, hear from our teachers, hear from our building leaders, and offer a lending hand wherever we can to be able to address anyone's immediate concerns so that we're targeting all of our populations and making sure that everything we're doing is trying to help everybody to move in a positive and forward trajectory. So I don't know that there's a specific answer that I can offer with regards to the time that people spend outside of their contracted times on the weekends. I can just tell you that we do try to build a network of support, and I'm open to continuing to have any conversations that anybody has to continue to work in support of those things.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I just think in developing maybe next year's budget, it's important to really look at the factors of a special education teacher outside school hours. Because I remember weekends, I just, I, I would ask my sister to take my child's because I'm like, I just need to catch up on this, and I can't do it at school. Because we also have to plan our lessons as special education teachers for our students, as well as have a caseload of 20 to 25 students and make sure that everything is in compliance. And if we don't, our jobs are in jeopardy. So I just think that that really needs to be brought to light and taken into consideration for next year's budget. And if I had thought of this before this year's budget, then I probably would have brought it forth. But everything is just kind of trying, starting to come together for me. But just to take it into consideration because it's pretty intense, and it takes away from a lot of special educators' time with their family and just living and just being a part. Because we need to keep a job, we need to keep our health insurance, we need to make sure our children are okay and our families are okay, and we need to get those IEPs done, and we need to stay in compliance. And we need to still plan those lessons, and we need to show up five days a week, six to seven hours a day for our students. But it goes far beyond that. So I just ask that the Board, Superintendent, Mr. Hall, you know, Mr. Vincente, you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Next response to motions 02 by Eileen Del Rossi regarding next generation civics and 7 Point C by Stacy Thompson regarding Civic Stay. So those have been joined together in one response. I don't know if either of you would like to speak on this. Ms. Thompson?
First of all, thank you for the response. What I will say is, I really think it's important, Civic Stay is a very special day, and all the work that goes into it by our young people and the people who are supporting them to make it a success, is, it needs to be taken, I think, to the next level. So the reason why I, I put this motion forward is because I think that we need to make sure that it's not just a spotlight because there was an opportunity, or the response was to have an extended spotlight on excellence, which is fine. But this is really, for me, more about a sit-down between these young people that have dedicated so much time to the success of their particular projects and the elected officials so that they can actually get involved in the civics as it is working. So I really wanted this to be a little bit more meaty and to be more than just a, a listening session, but to have that feel to it. And again, for it to be something that's set aside in a day in here where they can not just present their projects and we can, you know, applaud their great work, but really get down to the nitty-gritty of having conversation with our young people. Thank you.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I would just like to really, again, strengthen the voice that Ms. Thompson has in just saying like, our young kids have come out with some amazing projects for the Civic Stay, and they want to continue with it, and they want to see a difference in the community. And we need to nurture that so much because that, this is their baby. And we need to show them that their education, their projects, will have a voice being continued. And I just want to make sure that we have a platform to help them leap off to the next step for that. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any response. Oh, Ms. Chu.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question that draws me in. Can you give me a little bit more in details as like, when you list here, school lunches, can you give me in detail what it is that you're talking about, school lunches? Is it about like kids educating other students about their backgrounds for their family, you know, can you, I just want to, I'm just very curious about that. Thank you.
I, I think it was about taste and presentation and quantity for the students. They wanted a better presentation, they wanted a better taste, they wanted more quantity. And that was made evident through pictures of lunches and so forth. And it, it was kind of their voice in saying yes. And I, I believe it was the daily that a lot of kids worked actually with the cafeteria staff, and they were able to make some changes and to benefit the, the program. So I think that their voices were heard, but maybe a contingency stream throughout the district. So all of the middle schools, all of the elementary schools could have that ability also.
I'm sorry, it's just, for me, it's just that, you know, I've seen Lowell High School students, they cook lunches, I mean, they have meals that they provide. I know that there are teachers that provide some kind of breakfast or some kind of lunch to their students that are from their cultural background, and I, I've seen that firsthand. Are we, can we bring this up to our students that are doing this, this program? Can we ask them if they can share a little bit about their, the meal or the food, and then have that presented to their cafeteria staff and kind of educate other children about their food? I mean, I understand what you're saying about the portion and all that stuff, but can we kind of collaborate and bring that in as well? Thank you.
Maybe I can assist here, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, Ms. Chu, I believe you're referring to, actually, it's, it's a book that's gonna be published here that's by one of our teachers at the high school, Ms. Lander, who was actually a nominee and a finalist for State Teacher of the Year, doing extraordinary work at the high school. Actually, she engaged students around their backgrounds, their cultures, and how that influences food and sharing recipes. Our in-house executive chef actually met with the students, took those recipes, and incorporated them within the menu in our school cafeteria. So diversifying our school entrees and our school lunches through the voice of our students, under the guidance of Jessica Landers, doing really unique and incredible work here in Lowell Public Schools. I'm not aware of any other school district that's doing that. So a real testament to the work of our teachers and the partnership with our cafeteria staff coming together to honor the voices and cultures of our children. So I believe that's what you're referencing. Yeah, incredible work that's happening. And once we get back into the school year, this is actually a teacher I'd like to come and share him with the, with the committee under one of our spotlights to be able to share with you some of that work. There's, in terms of the other, thank you for the notes. We'll certainly take those notes and make sure that we can respond to those. And the topics, Committee Member Chu, are selected by the students in, within this particular project. So they identify issues that relate to them within the community that are of a policy nature. They could be related to school district policy, but could also be related to municipal policy, state policy, or even federal policy. And they then do the research themselves and then present back. One, the lunch is one, you may recall, actually, within our budget, we provided for transportation for high school students for the first time ever in Lowell Public Schools, came out of some of the study and research from our students. They found, I believe, the number was 70, 70% of students said on any given day, they were more likely to come to school if they had access to free transportation at the high school level. So these topics are broad-based categorization of the many diverse projects that the students presented on this day. And they spent a considerable amount of time, several months throughout the course of the year, studying and researching topics of their own design. So within each header, there were multiple topics by students across schools throughout the district. So this was the first one that we've held, and it, it seemed to be so well-received by students, families, and community members that we're looking to make it a standard practice within the district. And then we'll work to expand it across.
And I think to Ms. Thompson's point that she was looking for something more robust, I think that when we get the presentation from the students, because as Dr. Boyd mentioned, every year, it's based on their interests, their research, they can come before us, and then we can brainstorm at that time perhaps, given the specific topics. Because I think that would be an excellent way to value their work and take it to the next level. So I agree with you on that. So the next, is there any other comments on this? We can go to the next one. Response to motion 15 by Eileen, Eileen Del Rossi regarding All Hands on Deck Cosmetic Task Force. Ms. Del Rossi, did you have any comments?
I just want to thank everybody for all of their motions, all of their responses to all of my motions this week. There were many of them. So this one was in regard, and I think that the, what it, from what I remember reading, is that as long as it is okay with the union, then we can work together and everyone's in collaboration. And so, thank you for the response. I think it speaks for itself.
If I could jump in, I, I think this was a great idea. I'm wondering if the Facilities Department, who's leading this effort, has any information about a timeline? Like, when do you think this would happen? You know, coordinating all these players and being able to work on these projects. Dr. Boyd, I don't know if you?
Dr. Hall?
Sure. Yeah, the, the, this motion and the next two have already had a impact, in my opinion. So we've solicited the principals. Should they develop a proposal to use community members? We do have to give the city unions 30 days' notice to object. You know, certainly we'll ask if they could lessen that 30-day period, but we do have to provide that notice. We've been told that painting most likely won't be objected to. Other larger projects may be objected to, but again, we've requested principals to make proposals, and then we'll route them through the appropriate labor channels to try to get these going. So it'd probably be in August in consideration of the 30-day period.
Now, the next motion is a response to my motion 16. Ms. Martin will come up.
Okay, so item 88, response to motion 16 by Jackie Doherty regarding windows and screens. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. The reason I want to sit down here, because I want to share with the committee that we met, this, this topic, this report was one of the subjects on the agenda for our discussion last night with the, the joint facility subcommittees, the City Council and the School Committee. So it happened last night, so I'm not going for minutes, I'm just going from my own notes. Present from the School Department, we had Dr. Hall, Ms. Turner, members of the Facility Subcommittee, which is Mr. Lay, Ms. Del Rossi, Mr. Underwood was also there, and myself. From the city side, we had Facilities Chair, Councilor John Leahy, CFO Connor Baldwin, Assistant City Manager Sean Machado, DPW Commissioner Mark Byrne, and Councilor Getcher, he arrived a bit later. So we didn't have the full complement of the council to begin, so we took it as a educational opportunity because we had so many of the stakeholders there. And I think there were a couple of things that stood out at that meeting that I, I wanted to share with you. The first is that we had agreed we need to do this again. And, and Ms. Martin, who was present, specifically asked the members there from facilities representing the schools and the city, what would be a fair timeline that we could get together again and have updated information specifically regarding the windows and the screens and the shades and the priority HVAC concerns? Because those have been issues we've been, this Facility Subcommittee has been putting forward, as well as locks on the doors. The outside doors were specifically brought up, they're all working now. But they did say there's still some internal doors, and we still have a huge number, as you saw by the report, of windows. But the good news is that most of those, many of those are not replacing glass. Some might be easy fixes that they can do quickly. So they're in that process of working together, the city, DPW, with the schools, facilities, people, to identify what are the priority things, what are the things they can get done quickly in terms of the windows. We also discussed the whole issue, which I think is directly related to Dr. Boyd's Capitol Update Report tonight, about the, you know, the money that this committee and the previous one committed, the $14.7 million that was referenced earlier by Mr. Georges. And last night, former Mayor Leahy wanted to emphasize that we made that commitment to $14.5 million out of $60 million that we were getting in SIR funds. And, and that money is, can be used for things like ventilation, because it is known that that impacts the quality of the air in the school. And to the report that Dr. Boyd gave us tonight about wanting to see a commitment from the city, like how much are they going to put forward? I was encouraged when CFO Baldwin said that they were going to provide matching funds. That sounded really good to me. But we don't know what that exactly means, right? Because right now, all we're seeing is the 2.3 million or whatever that, that other number is. So it was agreed that there was more work, more discussion that had to happen, and that we want to do another joint between, you know, Facilities Subcommittee, the City Council, and the School Committee. And we gave that timeframe, four to six weeks, so that they have time to prepare the information. We want an update on what's been done. We want an update on what the, what has been identified as priority areas of concern. And we also want a commitment from the city in terms of specifically how much they're going to contribute in what areas. And I think that's a fair request. And as Dr. Boyd mentions in his report, we've asked a couple of times. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get to that point. And at this point, I wanted to just make sure my colleagues are all updated on where we are, and also that I have your support to continue with these meetings, these joint Facility Subcommittee meetings. I've also been asked by the city to host the meeting, which means we post it, we provide the agenda. And I just, that isn't typical done, but this is the second time they've asked us to do it. So I would respectfully submit this as a report of progress and ask that we have our, our support to move forward with this joint Facility Subcommittee meetings.
So we'd...
I don't know if I could add something.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to move forward with scheduling our next joint Subcommittee with the city's Facility Subcommittee. Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
And I don't know if anybody had any questions about or comments. I mean, I know you were there.
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry. I would just like to put a motion forth to organize a centralized facilities, a joint centralized facilities Subcommittee. Because I don't think unless we approve that, then anything is going to get moved forward, working with the city. So I know I put that motion forth a while ago, but I was wondering maybe if I can put that motion forth now so we can make it realistic for the School Committee and the city side to, if...
I would just say, if you don't mind me saying it from here, at the meeting last night, that was a third agenda topic that we did not have time to get to. So it was decided that that would get continued to the next joint Facility Subcommittee, the creation of, of that.
But does it have to be approved by this body, I guess?
Creating, to create that, that joint? Yes, it, by both this body and the council.
So can I put that?
I'm sorry. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, if I, if I could. So I want to make sure that, one, for this committee, that we understand the transition of the City Management So I want to make sure that, one, for this committee, that we understand the transition of the city manager. So oftentimes, you'll receive in my reports and in memos, reference to city manager. There is a transition of city manager. So the budget that was put forward was largely created by the prior city manager that was then adjusted by the current city manager. I believe the current city manager is only within, is still within his first 100 days, a significant amount of work needing to occur. And I want to just give a compliment to the current city manager, new city manager. We've met several times, multiple times, about this very topic, where he's working to transition from the information that he was provided, the data he was provided, and the many needs that are, that are requiring his attention within the city. And this is one that certainly is on the top of his agenda, and he and I have met multiple times. The committee did receive a draft framework of what a centralized oversight committee could look like. It does require a committee adoption, but largely that would come to you by form of a policy, for lack of a better analogy. So you would follow the same policy form, process that you typically undertake when you establish any policy with a first reading and a second. We gave a draft framework to the committee. We provided that same draft framework over to the counselors that are on the facility subcommittee. We received some feedback from the counselors. I'm open to feedback from the committee. You have that draft framework in multiple formats. We can provide it to you under separate header, if that's helpful. Dr. Hall did, did draft that for feedback. We can get feedback from those of you on the subcommittee, but it would come to the school committee and to the city council. Our process goes through first reading, second reading, and it gets added to your policy book. I'm not aware of what the council process is, but they have their own process to establish it. We've been following the guidance of the committee and, as well as what we've understood from council, to continue that work. We just haven't brought it to you as a first reading until we get feedback from the, from the subcommittee. So you don't have a need as a committee to negotiate out the ins and outs of it. And nor do you have a need to provide us with further guidance. Really, right now, it's what are the details that you want to see included? And you have a draft framework that really is intended for conversation purposes, so you have something to build off of. I do have a subsequent meeting with council members later on this week as well, related to the same topic. So we're continuing to go through multiple iterations and formulations of that. So Ms. Del Rossi, I didn't want you to think that your motion and your request has been ignored, it's been responded to. And you should have it, I believe, within this packet as well, Dr. Hall, is it not?
Yes.
So you have it within this update as well. It's called a centralized oversight draft framework. It's, it's prepared for redline version, so feel free to draft notes on it, share those notes with me under individual conversations, so we can continue to move forward. It's part of our three-step process here.
Thank you. I didn't realize how deep it was, but now I do. It's, it's very like, it has a lot of layers, so I didn't realize the whole process. So thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Doherty?
Response to motion 8.9 by Eileen Del Rossi regarding bathroom sink safety. Ms. Del Rossi.
Thank you for the response. It looks like any concern that I have was taken care of, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Response to motion 8.9 by Eileen Del Rossi regarding, oh, we already did that, sorry. Response to motion 8.10 by Eileen Del Rossi regarding students transported to hospital due to mental health concerns. Ms. Del Rossi.
It's just evident that there, even since December, there's been a, an increase, an overall increase. And the mental health issue is definitely something that needs to be addressed and embedded with our teachers. So I just ask going forward that all professional development going forward has embedded mental health training for our students. Because if their mental health is not addressed, then there's no point in teaching our students because it's just going to escalate any mental health issue. Thank you.
I, I don't know if anybody has any other comments about this. I just wanted to point out, we did this report as a comparison between the numbers we had December 1st to 2021, and it's broken down elementary, middle, and high school. It's almost three times more, the number of students in each category. And I know even when we go out the report, because this was a motion I had in December, I thought it was low, because as you know, we get these notices every week. And it seemed like the numbers were low from what I had been experiencing. But even with those numbers, we've now almost tripled it. So clearly, we have students and families in crisis, many who've experienced trauma from the COVID and all the other things that have happened around that, and needing more supports. But at this point, unless there's any more comment, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize you, Committee Member Doherty, Madam Chair. There's a, because you have been, you've been, you did bring this forward in the winter. Ms. Del Rossi brought forward a similar motion. You're seeing it play out here locally in Lowell. It's now being referred to as a nationwide youth mental health crisis across the country. And I, I might go so far to say that it extends beyond this country. However, we are becoming increasingly and exceedingly aware, within the United States certainly, in our public schools, about the crisis and the need for mental health amongst our young people. The current data shows that it's playing out in exponentially higher rates within urban communities and high poverty communities. So certainly within our gateway cities across Massachusetts. This is, I believe, not only lingering after effect of COVID-19, but something that's been increasing in terms of awareness and prevalence even prior to COVID-19 that was then exacerbated through the stay-at-home protocols. We actually had a student who spoke quite powerfully at the adult education graduation, for those of you that were able to join me there. And he spoke about the reason why he was graduating at the adult ed ceremony as opposed to the Lowell High School ceremony, and spoke about his own experiences with mental health. And it was a quite powerful testimony that was provided under positive terms in his own graduation, speaking to the challenges that he had experienced due to, due to remote learning. So I think it's extraordinarily important that we continue this focus. The committee has made a significant investment. Over the past two years, we now have $10 million additionally invested across mental health and behavioral health this year and next year, on top of the typical investment that the committee makes in a standard way. These are some of the investments that we're going to be looking to continue even after Esser, through the Student Opportunity Act increases. This is right now part of the fiscal cliff, so to speak, at the end of year three of Esser, that I just want to, again, remind the committee, this is going to be one of those areas that we're looking to make sure that we can sustain. So thank you, Madam Chair, for surfacing it. Thank you, Committee Member Del Rossi, for continuing the conversation going. And it is certainly an important topic across our schools. So Mr. Georges also referenced it. It's part of ongoing conversations that he and I are also having. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Just one quick question, talking about our investment in mental health services. Do you know, Dr. Boyd, or maybe Mr. Vincenti would know, is Lowell considered a trauma-informed district? I know the Federation for Children with Special Needs has a program where districts get this designation because they provide professional development services to their staff around trauma-informed, creating IEPs, working with students. And I'm just wondering if anybody from the administration is aware. I mean, I think you can look it up on DESI, I haven't done that, but I just thought you might know that. Do you know that, Dr. Boyd?
I'll have to get it, I'll have to get it to you. I don't want to misquote it, so I'll have to provide that to you. That would run under Ms. Desmond's leadership, and she's at, actually, a professional learning conference right now. So I'll have to get that to you, so I don't misstate anything.
Thank you, that would be great to know. So at this point, unless there's other comments, I need a motion to accept reports of the superintendent, 8.1 through 8.7, as reports of progress. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin? Oh, 8.11? Okay, well, I was reading what was said, but, okay. Need a motion to accept reports of the superintendent, 8.1 through 8.11. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, approved. And now we go on to new business. So this is the first reading of the update to graduation requirements policy. We have a registered speaker. Do we want to let the speaker go first, or do we want to report? Dr. Boyd?
This is a follow-on to the presentation that the committee already had, to now go into the policy itself. My head of school, Fiatto, Associate Head of School Rothschild are here to share the specific policy recommendation. I would recommend to allow the speaker to speak first, because I would imagine there's going to be some continued conversation and questions for our head of school.
Thank you. Ms. Olga Madrid.
Good evening. My name is Olga Madrid. I'm part of the Hispanic Student Success Task Force. So I'm here representing, I'm here representing the Hispanic Student Success Task Force. This is a local committee made up of parents, community members, and LPS staff. We are committed to improve educational outcomes in our Hispanic population. So before to start talking about the points that we want to discuss, I want to just focus on the community that we are trying to support. This is a community who, is a community who come, who came from different countries, and they, they don't speak the language. They don't speak English. They speak different languages. The parents, they work two or three jobs. The kids are home alone after school. Some of them, if they are lucky, their grandparents are taking care of them. Many of them, they are undocumented, so they have a lot of fear of the system. They, they prefer to don't ask a lot of questions. The decisions, in many cases, are made by the students because the parents, they don't know about the educational system. In our countries, the educational system works totally, totally different. So for many of the parents, they, they send the kids to the school, and it's like, okay, they are safe there, and I have the time to go to work. I don't have to be involved. Parents, they don't have idea about college requirements. Because the need for the parents is most that, that the kids go to the college, the main concern is when they are going to start working to have another income in the house. Many of them, they come from different countries, and they, the priority that they have is to survive. They come with history of trauma. Not necessarily from the, coming from their countries, but also just being an immigrant is a fact that is going to affect them and is going to make them like easily being oppressed or being just part of a population who is sometimes invisible. So after talking about, oh, not talking about COVID. Do you remember COVID? The statistics shows the majority of the races in Hispanic, Hispanic population, they die initially because they didn't have the information about COVID, because we didn't understand what was the vaccine, or the vaccine wasn't available to us initially. So there is a lot of trauma because of COVID, because of the conditions that they have. Now I'm going to talk about our discussion. So talking about the, the requirements, the new requirements. We have, if you see the statistics, we see like more than 10 points of difference between the, between the years of graduation, the graduation rates in Hispanic students and the general population. That means we are, we have a really, really low percentage. That's great, that we are trying to get the mass core requirements, because it's going to make the school competitive. But it's, what's going to happen with our students if they are already below? How we are going to make them to be able to catch up and to be able to get more resources to be successful? Resources like communications involving the parents, involving the families, explaining expectations from the school. And when I talk about communication, and when I talk about language, I want to, I want you to understand that even we speak Spanish, we don't speak the same Spanish. When I talk to people from Ecuador, they speak five native languages. And I spend the double of the time that I spend talking to another person in Spanish, and they don't, after I finish, I say, can you please repeat me, what did I say? They don't know, because the comprehension is different, because they speak so many languages, and even they speak Spanish, it's not the same thing. So communication and access to language is not as easy as, okay, let's put translators. It's something more, it needs more, more work. Better systems to improve attendance. Attendance is a big issue in the Hispanic community. And the reason is because the parents, they don't know what's going on. They don't know how to connect with the school, and the school trying to connect with them, and they are working. I know the school is working so hard in this topic, but I also understand that this topic needs to start being like preventing like before the high school. The parent needs to know that it's a requirement to attend the school. After-school programs. Some, when I work with families, sometimes they said, oh, the teacher cannot provide support to my son because they are not allowed to do that. So what happened with the after-school, what happened with the tutoring? At what time they can come if they are working all the time, if after, in the afternoon is the only time? So this is one big concern about how we're going to make the students to catch up, if they are already behind. The other one is two years of language. So I understand, we understand that it's a college requirement, and it's not required, it's not going to be required, right? So the, the point is, language, language courses can be culturally sustaining for multi, for our kids. So how we can, that can be an opportunity for them to be success, because they already speak the language. And can be like, the, the amount of subjects that they have can be easier for them to, to have them.
Excuse me, Ms. Madrid?
Time?
Yeah, if you could just wrap it up, because we're supposed to keep it to five minutes.
Yes, just one minute more. Health education, maybe substitute with dance and band show? Yes, that's, that's okay. But how we can be sure that our kids are going to get the functional health knowledge, beliefs, practices, skills needed to adopt and maintain healthy behaviors? So that's another part of resources that we need to put in place if they are not going to take this subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. Mr. Fiatto, if I could just also recognize the speaker. This is our Hispanic Student Success Task Force. Is some, is a task force that's working through with our equity office. It is something that we're really proud of and really looking forward to the advice and the continued guidance. And I just want to recognize your time, that you're putting into that and investing in our children. So thank you for coming out here this evening. Mr. Fiatto, if you could, share with the committee and the community, just walk them through the, the policy itself. Again, for the committee and the community, this builds on Mr. Fiatto and Dr. Rothschild's previous presentation about our next phase of secondary school redesign. This has been continuous work since 2019 for us to continue to reimagine our high school experience. Part of that re-imagination was part of the search process and hiring. Mr. Fiatto on as head of school, the committee went through discussions of reorganization. You've gone through the conversations of A Portrait of a Graduate. This is one part of it. I don't want anyone to mistake a process of updating our graduation requirements for being something that in policy automatically leads to implementation. This is one step within a larger vision of reimagining our high school experience for our students. Also, as we update our policy, the policy gets updated and implemented in phases. The goal here would be to update the policy and finalize it ahead of the freshman class take their first day of school. It would be. It would be implemented as requirements for our freshman class upon graduation. Our sophomore, junior, and seniors will continue to proceed in the graduation requirements that they knew when they entered high school. That's a typical implementation of new graduation requirements. I would highly recommend and encourage the committee that we take that same phased approach here in Lowell. So if we're able to get these approved and adopted ahead of the first day of school, they will be in place for our freshmen. That's the timeline we're working with here, hence bringing it to you now. You, we have some time ahead of approval, but for our new committee members, it takes two formal readings prior to approval. So there is no adoption tonight. It's feedback from the committee so that we can go back to the drawing board and update this and bring it back to you for final implementation ahead. But your graduation requirement policy is simply a one-page document. So it's, it's a one-page document, which is why you see that in front of you. That's the redline version. It's a broad graduation requirement that allows us to implement and tailor to meet the needs of each individual child. So undoubtedly, you'll come up with a lot of what ifs. They don't typically find themselves into a graduation policy. Here, you want to be specific enough that those who are implementing at our high school know what they're signing off on, however, broad enough so that they can also tailor to meet the needs of each individual child. With that, Mr. Fiatto, can you walk the committee through the policy document? Thank you.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to be here today to speak with you regarding the exploration of revising our graduation requirements at Lowell High School and also reimagining the experience for our high school students. As we reviewed the current graduation requirements, I want to make it clear that a high school diploma is a goal, but it's not the end goal. This proposal seeks to ensure that the diploma is a culmination of a student's four years of high school that prepares them for their next dignified step after graduation. And I know I came here about a month ago and I addressed the committee, but I'm here today to provide you with a high-level overview of the proposal and through the chair, answer any questions that you may have so that you can make an informed decision. Some of the reasons, as we look at the current graduation requirements, some of the reasons that we believe we should consider increasing the graduation requirements is to engage in this conversation. Push our community to review a graduation policy that hasn't been significantly altered or revisited in recent memory. Currently, the policy calls for students to take two years of math, two years of social studies, and two years of science. And as we did some evaluation of that current policy, students can fail up to 20 semester classes and only have to pass 64% of courses over four years in order to graduate. So this current policy creates a barrier for entry and preparedness to meet student, to meet college and workforce demands in this information-based economy. This also includes not being aligned with MasCor, the state university system, which involves all of our state schools and does not allow students, if they adhere to the current policy, to even be considered for a state college in Massachusetts. That includes two or four year. It also impacts their ability to engage in STEM fields that require math and science requirements. Also, it's a missed opportunity in social studies with only having to take two years of social studies and not, and miss out on a year of ensuring that our students are civically informed and democratically involved in, in the educational process. It's also a barrier for internal programs that we have. So within our current, at the, at the high school, we have an early college program. We have a pathways program and an after dark program. And these programs are designed to close those opportunity gaps for underrepresented groups and increase the number of students who are able to take higher level courses. Even our after dark program, which is a partnership with the vocational school, calls for students to be passing all of their academic courses and have passed Algebra I and Geometry at the end of their sophomore year and to be taking Algebra II, Financial Algebra, or Precalculus during their junior year in order to participate. So in order to allow the maximum amount of students to participate in these programs, we really want to consider the, allowing our students the, the opportunity to be pushed in that direction. And I can talk about the support and I, and I do appreciate Olga's comments. We've kind of crossed each other in various meetings. And I'd like to talk, I will add some comments about how we, we believe we can support students and families in this process. The driving factor behind this recommendation is to close the gap and what is required for graduation and what's required for post-secondary success for all students. So to be specific about what we're proposing for the future, if, if, if we're able to get this completed over the summer before the start of the school year, it would impact the class of 2026 and 2027. And we'd propose that all LHS students successfully complete an additional year of math, an additional year of social studies, an additional year of science. These changes are outlined in the red, in red academic section of our LHS handbook. And as I noted, as, as Dr. Rothschild noted through Superintendent and Robin Desmond to the school committee and our memo to the school committee, the school's current graduation requirements and courses of study, they don't reflect the post-secondary demands that are required for our students today. And as Olga alluded to, the MasCor completion rates for the state is 83%, while at Lowell High, they're at 14.9%. This extreme disparity results in an issue of equity and opportunity. And as a result, we, we're looking to increase graduation requirements over a five-year period in a thoughtful and phased-in approach in order to provide LHS students with the same opportunities that area high schools have, given their students with the goal of college and career readiness after graduation. Another reason is to improve access to higher education and job training to meet the workforce projections. There are currently in many, in many industries, more jobs than qualified workers. And we want to make sure that our students are prepared to meet that demand. We also want to stay on par with area high school and college entrance requirements so our students have a fair chance at success. And our goal is to have more students graduate from high school and be prepared for post-secondary, post-secondary education without the need for remediation when they enroll at a state or two or four-year school. But our graduation, currently, our graduation requires do not reflect that rigor and demands in entry requirements for two and four-year colleges and don't reflect the recommendations by the Department of Ed with MasCor. The way we came about reviewing this policy, reviewing the current policy and comparing it to other policies across the state, we, I, I, I worked with Dr. Rothschild to engage a, a team at the high school to review the current academic requirements across high schools. And we compared our graduation requirements to local high schools across the Mary Mack Valley. And we found that our, our requirements were not as rigorous as our neighbors. And what that does is it pits our students, it puts our students as, at an extreme disadvantage when competing for jobs and access to college. We also looked at student survey data and other internal, and consulted with other internal stakeholder groups, including our instructional leadership team, school site council, student advisory councils, and teacher representatives from different floors at the high school to get their feedback. And there was a very overwhelmingly supportive nature for these types of changes. We looked at the MasCor requirements. We looked at what, what other, what colleges are expecting from our students. And in all these areas, we fell short. So we, we were challenging our, our school community to at least take a look at these requirements and enter into this conversation to hopefully take an opportunity to review the current policy and also take recommendations. And we're making, I'm making my recommendation on behalf of the school as to what, what recommendations and changes we can make. So as a result, we seek your approval on this initial policy recommendation so that we can take our first step towards rethinking that experience for our high school students. And I just want to ensure that this, this is done, this, this proposal is done with an equity lens in mind in order to ensure that students who have been historically marginalized or disenfranchised and supported so that they can achieve the same goals as every other student across the region and in this country. Moving forward, we would take a community-wide approach to ensuring that students are supported because as Olga mentioned and as we know, attendance is a huge factor in students not being successful. So we need to look at a case-by-case approach. Not every student has the same experiences. So we want to engage our families. We want to engage the students in this conversation. We want to continue to engage, engage teachers. Look at what's going to, connect students to the high school experience so that they feel connected and supported. We'll be reviewing our intervention programs, our current stakeholder groups, and roll, rollout ideas and thoughtful approaches to ensuring that this is a process that can be sustained over time. We also may want to rethink the school day by providing students with some flexibility with their schedules while still maintaining that high level of standards. And at the end of the day, grade nine is that make or break year. And I, and I know this is a district, we need to take on a district approach, but from the high school perspective, that grade nine year is the make or break year. So we, we want to make sure that we increase the amount of students being successful in grade nine, making sure that they have the structure, intervention, and supports to increase their outcomes. And as we know, if students come into grade 10, ready to, ready to tackle some higher level courses, the trajectory and chances of them being successful and within their, across their four years is going to, is going to be remarkably better and more situated for success. We want to make sure that we have student support services in place for students so that they can meet these new graduation requirements if they're, if it's passed. But also that they understand what it is and why and increase that level of self-efficacy and motivation so students want, can envision themselves after four years achieving a goal, whether that's to, to go right into the workforce, military, college, or career. But they should be given that opportunity to be able to make that decision once they have completed a rigorous, a rigorous course of study. We want to increase communication with the school community, keep them informed and involved with these proposed changes. And that includes our Hispanic community and all levels of, all levels of our, our community. And, and continue to, with the, continue to work through our existing partnerships with our instructional leadership team, school site council, existing parent groups, higher education, which is critical. What are, what are the, what are the, and when we, just as, as a point, we, through A Portrait of a Graduate work, we did have our teachers and staff members met with members of higher ed. And some of the concerns or challenges that our higher ed folks saw with students coming from Lowell High, there was a lot of positive, but some of the, the challenges were, were noted in terms of reading, writing, literacy, and also organizational skills. So overall, I'm really excited that we're, we're having the conversation and want to be able to do this in a thoughtful and sustainable way so that it takes root and it makes positive changes for years to come. So hence, that's why we're really looking at a purposeful and planned-out process over time to, to ensure that we have the staffing needs that we, that are required to embrace these changes as well as building the excitement to be a high school student and want, and, and really engage our students in, in this process. So that's, that's basically an overview of the presentation that I came, that I came with in the, about a month ago and some of the reasons behind the changes and why we want to make those changes and some potential next steps if we are able to engage our community in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Fiatto. I'm wondering, Ms. Del Rossi?
If you could, if I could.
Oh, excuse me, Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure that I can focus the committee on where we are right now because the re-imagination of our high school experience is a complex, multi-year, multifaceted conversation that the committee has been involved in. But we do have some practical needs as well. So what's before you tonight is the first reading of policy. So Mr. Fiatto will entertain any questions you have certainly while he's here. But the, the reason you've gotten this at the main committee is because our College and Career Readiness Subcommittee unfortunately has been on hold and on pause. I might suggest, because you'll take, you're going to adopt the policy hopefully ahead of next school year, which will be at the next committee meeting. Proceedurally, you have a first reading that we have to go through tonight. There's only, if you look in your packet, it's a one-pager with, it might seem like brief edits in terms of a first reading that has a seismic impact on the experience for our students. And I want to make sure that the committee understands how this fits within the context of our larger conversation of secondary school redesign that the committee's been immersed in since I got here in 2019. We're going to continue to take those steps. So we have one of two possibilities here this evening. One is certainly engage Mr. Fiatto. I would also suggest that if there's, if the College and Career Readiness Subcommittee is going to be, continue to be in pending or on hold status, there's an Equity and Access Subcommittee that also could be beneficial here to utilize. You also have a Policy Subcommittee that could be utilized. And you have a Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee. I do think whatever one of those, whichever of you that happens to be chairs of those committees, if you would like to take this up, it could be beneficial to have a set aside, separate conversation ahead of your adoption of the, of the policy itself. And I believe, Madam Secretary, is the next committee meeting, full committee is August 15th? I can't recall the, the 10th? No? It's the second week of August.
It's the 10th.
All right, so August 10th. So there is some time between now and then. I just, I want to make sure that we're not limited by time of this evening and the desire to be brief within your questions. And you get to have the full discussion with Mr. Fiatto, Dr. Rothschild so that we can get to adoption of the policy ahead of our incoming freshman class. Because they will be meeting with all of the incoming freshmen to go through the graduation requirements as part of their orientation and freshman seminar. So it's, it's vital that we make a decision ahead of the first day of school. And you do have time, but time tonight could be more limiting than you feel comfortable with. So with that said, I'll, I, I would suggest, Madam Chair, open the floor to discussion. And also, I welcome that motion to whatever Subcommittee that is not called College and Career Readiness that the committee might prefer.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'm interested to hear from my colleagues. I've got three hands up. We'll start this way, Ms. Thompson, and then we'll move down the line.
I have several questions, Dr. Fiatto, so I will try to make them as brief. And I just want to start by thanking Dr. Fiatto and Ms. Madrid for their presentations.
I, I wish I was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fiatto, Mr. Fiatto. I'm speaking it to, I'm speaking it into existence for you. So what I will say is this, you know, I'm really, and I said this to you before when you presented and you presented really well the last time, but I'm very concerned with the equity impact. And I know you're looking at it with an equity lens, but there's intention versus impact. And I know that there are organizations like Fortaleza that are really trying to work with the Latinx population to bridge some of this gap. But this is not a kid here or there, which would still be highly unacceptable. This is a massive group, which is our largest ethnic, cultural group within the Lowell Public Schools that is affected. And we really have to be cognizant, and I'm not saying you're not being thoughtful, so don't, don't think that that's what I'm saying. But we have to be really cognizant of these choices because it, it's going to have very, very big ramifications. One of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Fiatto, was that you involved, you know, several levels of high school teachers, professionals in the process. Did you reach down to the elementary and middle schools? And I ask that because they're the ones who are really going to be upholding all this work. Quite frankly, if they haven't done the work, by the time it gets to high school, it's too late, right? So I'm just curious as to, I guess my first question would be, how much engagement did the elementary and, and middle school teachers have in the, in the design thought process?
That's a great question. To this point, I've personally not involved, been involved much with, at all really, with elementary and middle school other than the community-wide effort. That Portrait of a Graduate has been, and we've embarked on that over the last three years and we've received feedback around what we would envision our graduates to be by the time they complete high school. And that was a community-wide effort. But specifically about graduation requirements, have not involved those stakeholders.
Okay. So that would be obviously a concern for me. And I think that that's a huge, a huge necessity to, in order to be able to really pull something like this off. This is a massive lift. The other question I had, and I don't want to get too into the weeds because some of my questions are rather specific. But the second bullet says must pass 10 credits of U.S. history. Does that mean like, can civics be one of those classes is basically what I'm asking? Because as we know, we're trying to expose our young people to different types of history and not just the same U.S. history that we know is not correct in the first place. And hopefully that's being something that we're looking at is correcting the U.S. history that our students are learning. But what, what does that mean, I guess?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Rothschild, but I, one of the, when I came, when I came to Lowell High, one thing that really impressed me was the diversity in courses that are offered for students in terms of ELA and, and social studies, for example, and the wide range of authors that students could be exposed to and the wide range of courses. So I do believe that is accurate, that students can take a combination of U.S. history and civics classes to meet that requirement.
Come to the mic.
Can you come to the mic? I'm sorry.
I apologize. I'm also much shorter, so I have to.
I'm also much shorter, so I have to move the mic. But that's also why we have, or we are proposing to increase the social studies requirements because we also want to add the world history or the global studies requirement so that we are also adopting that lens with the increase to 15 credits.
Okay. And I guess my last question without trying to take up too much time for my colleagues because I can go on all day. The first bullet says four years attendance, so nobody can graduate early? I was just curious about that. So, there's no potential for somebody to graduate in three years?
In the handbook, it does state that it's the discretion of head of school to allow a student to graduate early, meet the requirements, and there's a legitimate need or reason that would necessitate an early graduation.
Okay. Thank you. I will concede.
Yeah, sorry, and this might also come out in Subcommittee, but that's also why we haven't made that recommendation in this first read. That's something that we know we need to build towards in terms of flexible pathways. So, we don't see that as something being feasible for next year, but as we engage in the planning process with additional stakeholders, as POG continues in its development, that that would be another alternative path that we could possibly present to our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, and thank you, the team, for presenting this to us tonight. I do agree that I think moving forward, we do want to refer this to Subcommittee. I don't know if it makes sense to just do a joint of policy and curriculum. Kind of hits everybody and would cover some bases with the other committee not kind of functioning right now.
Do you mind, Madam Chair?
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. There is, I don't, I can't recall off the top of my head the chair of the curriculum instruction, but I do know the admin rep is Ms. Desmond, who's been heading up this work in conjunction with, so.
It's me.
That would make it, so from an administrative side, it's easier to convene and do that one conversation and then invite others. If you're okay with that, where we do it as a curriculum instruction, then you can open it up to others that allows us to have one representative.
I think if we include policy, then we include more members as voting with the ability to vote.
Oh, okay. If the committee's okay with us organizing it that way with Ms. Desmond, that makes it a little easier for scheduling purposes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you need to have two administrators there.
Yeah, I would agree. I think this would be under Ms. Desmond's purview and her expertise would be the most.
I think that would work out well.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Martin, and then if you have questions, we can go back to. We have a motion by Ms. Martin to refer this report to the.
To the curriculum and policy.
Curriculum and Instruction and Policy Subcommittees. Seconded by Ms. Thompson.
Madam Chair, can we have a chance to speak about it before we put on a motion? Is that fair?
Of course. So, we have a motion on the floor. If you have comments or concerns or you'd like to share, Mr. Lay, feel free.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, by reading this report, does that mean 85% of the students in Lowell High cannot complete the math core rate, completion rate? Is that fair to say?
Many students choose to take four years of math and choose to take four years of Social Studies and choose to take four years of Science, but it's not a requirement. So, if a student like me maybe didn't want to take four years of math, can choose to not take four years of math or fail two years of math and still graduate. So, that does impact, it does impact by nature of the way the policy, the current policy's written, that students could, students, the math core is reflected, the math core numbers are reflected in the limited, the lack of compliance with math core.
So, because our requirement for graduation is a little bit loose, therefore, students don't have to work that hard to graduate, therefore, they take an easy way out.
Again, so we did a cross comparison, and maybe Jill can speak to it, Dr. Rothschild can speak to it. We wanted to know if this policy didn't exist, how many students would graduate under the newer, like the new recommended policy? And there are, there is, I can give you the number in a second, we're going to look it up, but we did that, we did that work to find out how many kids would graduate if we had this, if they were under this current policy, and there are a number of students that would. But there are many students that, for example, fail two math classes and still can graduate, and consequently, they don't meet math core because they're not passing the classes, or they're not taking three years, a full four years as recommended by math core. But I think it's, math core is one factor in this, but it's really about how we're preparing young people for success after high school, and are we providing them with all of the tools to enter into such a challenging, information-based, and rapidly changing global society with these current graduation requirements? So, yeah, math core is a consideration, which we believe is important, but I think more importantly is, what are we expecting from our students, and can we raise that bar while raising support as well?
Let me give a little bit of further clarity on that particular aspect of this conversation. So, math core is a recommendation from the state to align the requirements with college readiness. It's not a direct correlation with what colleges say are necessary for college success. So, every year, we send students on to the most rigorous and most selective colleges and universities in the country with our current graduation requirements. The intent here of our, of updating our graduation requirements is not simply out of compliance with math core. There actually is no requirement for compliance with math core. It's a framework that was put together by a group of stakeholders to provide guidance to committees such as yourselves as you're considering these conversations. We went through an analysis when I was working in Boston Public Schools. Many of you know, I supervise as part of my region of schools, Boston Latin School. Boston Latin School historically is known as achieving the highest acceptance rate at Harvard University of any public high school. Boston Latin School's graduation requirements were not directly aligned one-for-one with math core. So, there's, math core itself is, as Mr. Fiatto said, it's a reference point, and it's an important reference point because it allows you as a committee to say, how aligned are you with what the stakeholders around the state are saying? How aligned are you with the reference point that other school committees are using within their graduation standards? But it is one reference point. If there's a desire from the committee to have 100% alignment with math core, that could look very different here, and if that's the guidance that the committee wants us to undertake, we actually looked at 100% alignment with our Portrait of a Graduate expectations, 100% alignment with what we're hearing from local stakeholders, 100% alignment with what our internal and external committees are sharing with us. That's not necessarily, I don't want the committee to assume that automatically when you pull up the state ledgers, that you're going to see 100% alignment with math core. It'll certainly get you closer. So, right now, the committee has not taken any steps in order to align graduation requirements of math core. Your graduation requirements were set in policy in 1975. Math core is significantly more recent than that. So, that was one of the frameworks. It was not the intent of this update to simply bring us into 100% alignment with math core. There's actually considerable debate statewide as to what went into the math core framework when that was released. So, it's one reference point, Mr. Lay, and I appreciate you bringing that up because that's important for discussion, because if the desire with the committee is to align one-for-one with math core, you would actually see the total credit requirements being vastly different here. This is aligning in some ways with the tradition of Lowell while updating it to meet the needs of 21st century learners and to meet the expectations and demands of our community through the Portrait of a Graduate. It does also bring significantly greater alignment with math core, because that's one of the frameworks. But it's not a one-for-one, nor was it the only framework that was used. So, I appreciate it, Mr. Lay. That's an important, important point that you're making, and thank you, Mr. Fiatto, for bringing it up, and I appreciate it, Madam Chair, for allowing me to give that additional illustration.
Thank you. I want to just remind the committee, we have a motion on the floor to send this to Subcommittee, which would be a very good time to dig into more of these details. So, I'm wondering if there were any comments that were related to the motion? And Ms. Del Rossi?
I guess it's just a comment. It's not a question or anything. I do believe it should be referred to Subcommittee to dig deeper into it. I graduated Lowell High in 1998, and I love the fact that you guys are digging into this because I think it desperately needs to be dug into, because when I left, I was not post-secondary ready in any way, shape, or form. I failed algebra class after algebra class and struggled and didn't have the right skills necessary, and I see that in all of our students today. I think of my child, who's going to be graduating in 2031. He will dance, he will dance and hop and skip so much around all of this. I can see that. My, you know, I, I get nervous because I think we're forgetting the fact that our 11th graders this year have already lost two years of being actually in the classroom. So, I guess my comment is to just think about the fact that our students have lost two years of physically being in the classroom, and we're expecting them now to rise to a level that may be impossible for them to due to their environmental factors, their demographics, so many different issues that our inner-city kids experience. So, I think that's my only comment. Thank you, guys, for everything.
Thank you. Are we ready to just take a vote on the motion, or were there other thoughts? So, the, if you want to read the motion back, please? The motion is to.
To refer to a Curriculum and Policy Subcommittee for further discussion.
I already have, it's Ms. Thompson's second.
Seconded, right. All those in favor, say aye. Passes. Thank you. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiatto. Incredible work happening at our high school. Also gives me an opportunity to, again, celebrate the, what will be the opening of the new gymnasium and athletic complex at Lowell High School, which I did have an opportunity to, just toward, just two days ago, and we are on schedule for opening in August for this incoming class of freshmen, but all students at Lowell High School will be engaged in their athletic activities at the new athletic complex. So, incredible work by the community and a real celebration. That's been a long way in the making. It's going to be great to see tangible results of that extraordinary community investment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So, the next item under new business is approval of the job description and permission to post special education teacher mentor, two positions. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none? So, we can have a, would someone make to, like to make a motion to post and approve the special? Actually, I had a question, if that's okay. Oh, Ms. Thompson has.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I did, I guess my question was, I noticed there was a $50,000 difference, and that was kind of, I was a little bit confused by that, so if somebody could explain that to me, that'd be fantastic.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Dr. Hall?
I don't.
Ms. Thompson, Dr. Hall's mentioning, you mean $50,000 difference, can you elaborate on that?
Unless I'm looking at the wrong thing, nope. On the bottom, it says, it is expected the enhancement to the mentoring program will cost between 40 and 90,000. I'm sorry, so that's what I was speaking about.
So, presently, we use dozens of mentors who are paid a stipend of approximately 3,500 to cover all these mentorships. However, by bringing in two full-time people that are paid in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, it's expected the total financial cost will go up approximately $50,000. But I think, like I explained, we believe we'll get consistency and more value by having people working full-time in the role instead of spreading it out throughout the district. And this was negotiated with the union, who had many of the ideas, so it was a very collaborative effort to come up with this.
Ms. Thompson, are you set? Ms. Martin?
Thank you. So, in making this move, we'd be eliminating the stipended mentorship positions for existing staff.
Yes.
So, how many people would that impact?
Approximately 30 to 35.
And what's the general kind of landscape ecosystem for hiring special education experts?
I'd anticipate that we have many quality special ed teachers in our district who would be interested in this. I think the after-effect, which you potentially may be getting at, is we then have to replace those teachers, which, you know, where it's one of our harder recruitment areas to get quality special education teachers. So, we did go over that with the union, the risks and benefits, and I think we believe that this could be very advantageous, even though we would potentially be taking, you know, two of our best special educators away from students, but I think it was believed that it was worth risking, that that multiplying effect of them being out in the field with all the other teachers would be worth the risk.
I mean, I think moving, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward. The change will need to be reflected in, you know, our budget, obviously, because we didn't anticipate this before when we were going through our budget process. But, you know, I do think that, you know, if the conversations included these special ed experts who are teachers and who had the opportunity to service as mentors before, of those 30 to 35 people, I would think that that may make their jobs less attractive, which could also work against us. I mean, I'm going on the assumption that these conversations have all happened, not only with the union, but with the actual individuals who were involved, so that we wouldn't see a real negative impact from this. But, so I will, I will go on faith that that has happened. Thank you.
I guess to just briefly, in full disclosure, address that, Ms. Martin, I wouldn't be able to directly talk to those mentors, but we've talked to the union extensively about the.
That I understand, and again, my faith continues.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I guess I just want to state, going through the special ed mentor program, it is extremely intense. You're learning how to use not only the Aspen system to document, you're learning how to use EZIAP. You're basically writing full IEPs, and teachers and the mentors are reviewing them, and you're in a continuous state of motion. I can tell you from my experience, my mentor would say, you're doing great, you're doing great, and, but my teacher, my teacher who taught me through the academy, taught me so many great skills, and that I think it's truly worth investing a lump sum instead of a chunk of money to an allotted amount of people because of how very specific the special ed mentor program truly is. Thank you.
And if I could just ask a question, Dr. Boyd, how many people are you thinking that these full-time mentors will be able to manage?
Dr. Hall? Case Lutz?
Approximately 35 to 40 new teachers, Ms. Doherty.
Okay. You said 35 of 40 out of the two full-time positions?
Each.
Each? Okay. And is that pretty consistent with the number of new special education teachers we have coming in who would need mentorship?
Well, frankly, we discussed whether we'd need more, so we would be more comfortable with three, but, you know, given the impact, we decided on two for now, but we're certainly welcoming feedback on that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask maybe to orient me a little bit how we come about to need of this position?
Yes, Ms. Lay. So, new special ed teachers are provided mentors in, you know, their critical first year of, in the job, so it's a requirement. And previously, we had used a stipend of approximately 3,500 that we paid out to dozens of teachers to help mentor these new teachers. Working with the UTL, they suggested that we take all those dozens of mentors and take the money and create full-time positions for two teachers who could focus all their efforts on these new teachers and improving their practices and the program. So, that's how it evolved, is an effort to improve the mentorship program through the teacher academy. through the teacher academy.
So would we, anyone want to entertain a motion to post and approve the special ed teacher mentor, two positions? Okay, motion by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin. I think, do we need a roll call? Roll call.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow. Six ayes, one absent, approved.
Next item under new business, 9.3, approval of job description and permission to post director of parent family leadership institute. Ms. Martin?
If I could, I know that we just discussed this earlier in the minutes of the Family Engagement, right, subcommittee. So I know that we had gone back to the administration with some recommendations and things to consider. So I believe they're going to be coming back with a revised job description, if I'm not mistaken.
So is the plan to just hold off on?
Personally, I'd say we should hold it in abeyance until we get the updated job description.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Any other comments? Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, and the school committee members. So this position is funded specifically by the federal grant for community services, adult and community learning services. So this is a different grant than our public school dollars. So the director of adult education position that I proposed earlier was specifically for Lowell Public Schools families in support of students. This position is from the grant that directly supports the mission of the adult education system, which is broader than supporting families of Lowell Public Schools.
Want to make sure you're on the same one. She's, you're speaking to the next one, Ms. Phillips. The, you're a little ahead of the agenda. I think the question, the question, Ms. Phillips, is what it, is it going to be, is the anticipation, given that, is it just a matter of timing between posting the agendas? Was the anticipation in requesting approval here in terms of adoption of the recommendations from the subcommittee? Or does it require a redraft to bring back to the committee? There was a discussion at the family involvement subcommittee. Was the plan to bring back a redraft? Or is the request of the committee that they adopted with the edits that were discussed to be included?
So I, there was a request to see how it could better align with supporting adult education. I can bring back a revised description, but, and I apologize for getting the two confused, but I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that they had two different services.
If I may, committee member, Doherty?
Ms. Thompson?
There was, there was something about the education as well. The education, we didn't think it needed to be master's level and wanted to kind of lower that so that we could get the right people, the right combination of applicants. So that was an additional thing that we requested.
So my understanding then is we are going to put this aside for now until we come back, until you come back with a different job description or a changed job description.
That works.
I need a second on the motion to put that in abeyance. That was Ms. Martin's motion, and Ms. Thompson has seconded it. And we need a roll call.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Mia Chow. Six ayes, one absent, approved.
So now we go to, under new business, 9.4, approval of the job description, permission to post, adult education student advisor and community engagement facilitator.
No presentation needed.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. So looking at this job description, and I looked at it after our meeting on Monday, it does seem like there was some really strong alignment in the family institute and this adult ed position. Very comfortable moving forward with this revised job description to, as I understand it, it's, you know, so that's, I think that's great. But I do think that as we're considering how we build these systems, it would make sense for there to be some significant crossover with the previous position that we're kind of reimagining to a certain extent, and then this one. So I do think that there's an opportunity there. But I would make a motion to accept and post.
Motion by Ms. Martin to post and approve the adult education student advisor and community engagement facilitator, facilitator. That's quite a title. Seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow.
And we are moving on. Motion, I mean, new business 9.5, approval of LTA instructor stipend increase. Motion to approve, I'm looking, anybody want to approve this? Ms. Martin, motion to approve the LTA instructor stipend, seconded by Ms. Chun. Roll call.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow. Six ayes, one absent.
Thank you. And last motion, last new business, 9.6, vote to accept a donation of $10,000 from the Believe in Me Project. Motion to accept by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Del Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow. Six ayes, one absent.
Motion to adjourn.
I actually need to just take, I'm sorry, a quick moment of personal privilege. And this is something that was actually asked of me during the meeting for, and this goes back to the COVID protocol for the new school year. Are parents going to have to prove or have to sign something saying that their child has received the vaccine?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Motion to adjourn. Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor? Aye. See ya.